Good afternoon, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the Mesa City Council Study Session for the afternoon of Monday, November 21st. All of our council is present. The first item on our agenda for this meeting is to review our agenda for tonight's council meeting, and given that we don't have another study session prior to our December 1st council meeting, we will review that agenda as well. So, council, the meeting tonight. Anything on that agenda that you would like any additional information on? I know, Mr. Brady, we do have a scheduled presentation on the noise ordinance, so we'll do that.
Correct.
And that is on the agenda for tonight to introduce, item 6A, I believe. Counsel, any other questions about anything on the agenda tonight, Mr. Freeman?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention on 5F, I appreciate staff working on the irrigation water delivery districts for neighborhoods because it's extremely important for neighborhoods to have their own districts, and it allows them to do the maintenance. And I know I've worked with our transportation department, and they've done an excellent job in meeting some of the obligations with that. But changing that and allowing the neighborhoods to meet their resources and fix their problems is very important. So I want Water to know, thank you for doing that, because I think we have about 16 now in the city. There's a map on that, so it's as other neighborhoods develop their areas. So again, thank you, and I think that's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you. So just for anyone who's paying attention, December is a different month as far as city council meetings go, and I'm sure Mr. Brady will go over this at the end of the meeting. But our next meeting after this will be Thursday, December 1st, and it'll be a study session followed by a formal city council meeting. And then, a week later, on Thursday, December 8th, we'll do the same thing, a study session followed by a formal council meeting, and that will be the last council meeting for the year, so that we'll take the last few weeks of December off. So that's why tonight, we're reviewing two council agendas, the one for tonight and then the one for the 1st of December, just in case there was any confusion on that. Yes, Mr.?
Can I just highlight maybe a few?
Please.
Items on here to bring to your attention. 4P is important. It's a major infrastructure project that will help us open up the, I guess we're now calling it Aviation Way, that brings for development on the east side of Gateway Airport, Gulf Stream, and then the Boyer Development that's taking place on the east side of the airport. This brings utilities and road infrastructure into that area, so we just wanted to note that's a significant public works project between the city of Mesa and Phoenix Gateway Airport that's going to open up a tremendous amount of opportunities on the east side of the airport. And then 5A, I think you've noticed this, that we'll be continuing the canvassing of the election till December 1st, so that'll show up, but it's, we need council to actually continue that. And we also have on this agenda for tonight, the introduction of the utility rates that we've spent some time reviewing with council. So that is there, and these are the ones I just wanted to highlight for you. And if there's any questions on any of those zoning cases, we're also ready to cover those if there's any more specific questions about any of those items being introduced. Mayor, I didn't know if you wanted to say anything about 5, or 6B?
6B or 6D? We have a few zoning cases that are being introduced. We have a couple that are on for a hearing today. Right now, they're on the consent agenda, and then we have two or three that are on the consent agenda for being, for introduction, and then the hearing will be on December 1st. So I think there's a reasonable chance that we'll have some neighborhood folks show up tonight for one or more of those zoning cases, so those might come off the consent agenda. But right now, they're on the consent agenda, a few for approval and a few for setting December 1st as the hearing. So yeah, I won't be surprised if we have some discussion upstairs about one or more of those. Vice Mayor.
I have a question on 4K. It's a insurance for about $4 million for miscellaneous, I guess, renovations, repairs, additions, demolition, and facility improvements for city buildings. Are there buildings or facilities in particular, or is this overall for the city? Or how does this work, or is it something we just have on file as needed, or is this a targeted or identified project?
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Oh. Where'd you go?
Sorry.
So I'll take that question. This is actually one of my favorite topics. In terms of procuring professional design services and professional construction services, we're governed under the state statutes Title 34, and it gives us four different ways to do that. One of the ways we utilize is called job order contracting, which allows us to do smaller projects and multiple smaller projects a year without going out to full solicitation every time. So what this does is, yes, we, within our budgets, we have different projects. So for instance, right now, we're renovating or just finished renovating the second floor of City Hall. That was a project that was done under a job order contract. If you go to 120 North Center, we're renovating that building today. That's being done under a job order contract. The job order contract method saves us time and money in terms of procurement on every one of those selection processes. Plus, in the market we're working in today, right now, we are having trouble getting contractors to bid projects $5 million and smaller, because there isn't enough in it for them to, for the risk that they take on those smaller projects. So when we do these annual contracts, we, it allows us to go out to contractors that have been through the, and there's multiple contractors for every category. I think I counted, we have 20 contractors under 21 separate job order contracts for various categories that we can go to. Some of them are busier than others, we'll go to the other ones. If we can't get the right price, we terminate negotiations and go to another one. It gives us a lot of flexibility and allows us to use different contractors all over our community to do the work, and it saves us anywhere from three to six months to get a selection made on it, and the time that it takes to do that, as well as what it allows us to do is an economy of scale. So right now, we have the same JLC contractor doing the second floor as is doing the 120 North Center, and they're sharing superintendents, mobilization, site, storage, and all sorts of subcontracts between the two projects that result in economy of scale savings for the city.
Great, great. It sounds like it's much more efficient than I'd.
Very much.
Each individual project and getting that prolonged, so I understand a little bit better. Thank you.
Okay, Counsel, anything more about today's meeting? Mr. Brady, anything else from staff about today's meeting? Are you ready to move on?
Nothing specific, Mayor, no.
Okay, so let's move our focus then to the Thursday, December 1st meeting. I know, Mr. Brady, one of the items on here, the Public Safety Complex, the Joint Public Safety Building, I saw that Beth had a few slides, and I just, if anybody, unless somebody wants to suggest something else, Beth, why don't you tell us about 4F that we're going to be talking about the 1st of December, our exciting new combined public safety meeting or building?
This project's been about five years in the making. It was part of our 2018 bond program and election, which we started programming for in 2017. I'm here, and I have a few friends in the audience to help me answer any other questions you might have. I think Chief Camilli is here from Fire, Chief Butler's here from PD, and our engineering project manager, Makela Telenis, in the audience if there are some other questions that I might not be able to answer. So this project was planned in 2017-18. We found a site up in the Power-Brown area, eight acres. One of the unique things about the 2018 bond election was we had both a police station and a fire station needed in the same part, in the same district of our city. And so what seemed to make more sense to us is, again, it's an economy of scale issue. If we could locate police and fire in the same site, we can share some facilities like community rooms, job task conditioning, fueling stations, parking, all of those things we could combine. We were able to find an eight-acre site, which we finished acquisition of in early 2020 at this location, and it fits both of our facilities. So it was, it was really good to find that site. In the beginning, in 2018, we were looking at 57,000 square foot building, and we had $37 million in bond funding for the two facilities. That was five years ago. Things changed over the last few years in terms of our economy, and we found out that when we started to lay this site out, that we were $11 million over budget if we built that type of facility today. So we went back to the drawing board, and we looked at what kind of square footage could we build without losing any functionality, and how could we reduce the cost to get it closer to the budget? Today, what we're going to present to you is what we came up with. It's the revised design. You can see the police station is 28,000, 29,000 square foot. The fire and medical is just under 15, and we have shared spaces of about 6,700 square feet, and we're about 50,000 square feet today in this design. If you look at the site, and the site is oriented north with Power Road on your left, police will occupy the northern part of the site. The shared spaces in the main entry are in the middle in orange, and fire is in the red on the southern end of the site with the bays coming off of Power Road on the left there.
Maybe, Beth, we could also just go back to that slide real quick. One of the things we were able to do on the fire side is really take the template of the layout of fire station we've used like at East Mark and some of these other locations and fit it in this location. So that seemed to work out pretty well for us, and that's why we create that separation. So while we've had to cut a lot of square footage out, it's not necessarily in the operational side, and we're keeping pretty close to the same template of a fire station that we've used in other locations.
221.
221.
So moving on and looking at the budget, again, we had $37 million in funding out of the bond election. We're sitting at about 43.8 today. It leaves us about $6.8 million underfunded, which we've seen on other projects and which the city manager has been planning for as we go forward, knowing what inflation has done to the cost of our construction projects. Looking at the floor plans, and again, the north is to your left. The fire station, starting on your right, is in red. That's very similar to fire station 221 in terms of spaces, square footages, four bays, turnout area clear on the, on the southern end, dorms. The one big difference in this station is we have a battalion chief located at this station as well, and so you'll see that at the top. It's labeled BC/BSO. That space is a little different than what you would see at 221 because the battalion chief does reside at this station. Moving into the orange spaces in the center, you have a public lobby and the shared community room, which I think you're mostly pretty familiar with at our other stations, that the community can reserve and utilize. And then behind that, in the secured spaces of the orange area, we have job task conditioning that they'll be sharing, and we have a conference room and some other areas like that. There's also a set of bathrooms with the community room in the orange. Moving into the police station, very similar to Fiesta, except that Fiesta, as you may remember, is a two-story building, but the spaces are similar, and the types of areas and the square footage is just all on one floor. We have locker rooms, briefing room, sergeant's offices, police offices, and a small holding area in the police portion of the station with a Sally Port clear to the north end of the building. That's pretty much how it lays out on the site.
Can I ask a question about the holding area? I mean, I know there's, we've, there's liability, a holding area means people in custody that have been arrested, is that?
I'm going to ask Chief Butler to come help me with that one.
So if someone's, I know we've made an investment in our.
It's just, yeah, I think it's just, it's a, it's a short term.
Very short term. People don't spend the night there, and they're.
Go ahead.
Is this while they're being processed and transported to the, either the county or to our longer-term holding area?
Mr. Mayor, Counsel, yeah, that's exactly right. Mr. Brady, answer that, and I think you're going down the right track. It's a temporary processing station for officers, you know, not to drive all the way down to our main holding facility in downtown Mesa. It allows them to be more efficient with what they do prior to transporting anybody to our holding facility downtown.
Okay.
And I think the police departments become more strategic about how we transfer individuals, whether to substations or even from our holding facility to downtown Phoenix. We're trying to not hold, if we can't avoid it, taking an officer off the streets for an extended period of time. So this is trying to keep those officers back out on the street as quickly as possible.
That makes sense.
Absolutely correct.
Great, I get it. Thank you very much. Mr. Luna?
So Chris, it's underfunded, so how are we going to come up?
Well, it's over budget. Depending on your perspective. So what we've done, and this is happening with all the 2018 projects, right? We've had the Southeast Library, we came in and said, okay, back four, five years ago, we had a certain assumption of square footage and cost, and just in today's environment in the last couple of years, we've lost, you know, the dollars on a lot of these projects. So all of those projects that were in the 2018 bond program are going through this kind of assessment like we did with the library. What's the last, I can't remember the last one we brought, but.
It was the library.
The library. So what we're doing is trying to go back and evaluate what are the most critical things that we need to keep to deliver the programs, the services that we committed to. And so we did that evaluation here. Now, this is for public safety. We've had to look at maybe reducing some of the common area, maybe space that was going to be set aside for training and other areas, and also looking at the finishes on the outside and coming up with some creative ways. I think there was something to do with the HVAC system. We found some creative ways to address that. So what we're proposing to council is only shrinking the footprint by 7,000 square feet from 57 to 50. We still keep all the main components, and instead of being $11 million over, or 6.8 million. So it's still a pretty hefty number. Now, we, when we went into the budget this past year, we identified that we recognized, we're already seeing those escalating prices, so we set aside over $10 million in the budget, just, and it just, all we called it was construction inflation overrun. So right now, we're probably, this will pretty much spend most of that $10 million. That doesn't mean other projects aren't coming, we're going to have to find additional funding. But we felt like public, this was so important from a public safety standpoint, that of that $10 million, we needed to dedicate a significant portion to deliver the project even at a smaller footprint than we had originally talked about. But I think it does, does a lot of, provides a lot of services here. And let me just say one thing real quickly. You know, this location, for PD, it's important because it helps us take the services that are happening down at Superstition Springs Substation and bring them up here is important, but for fire, it's critical. We've, this location was identified through a deep dive on our data, as you recall, right? And just by locating it in this location, it's going to improve our response and the efficiency of the fire department tremendously just by now having a response from this location. So we, and we need to get this delivered, right? We need to get this built, and we've struggled with trying to keep it, try to get it to a budget we felt like we could still present to the council and identifying the funds. But we're committed, we've identified the funding, the additional 6.8 million that's needed for this project, even though with a smaller, slightly smaller footprint, we still think we meet all the, check all the boxes for what the services we need for this area.
Mr. Thompson?
Beth, do we still have all the decontamination and exhaust vents and all that for fire on their side?
Yes, actually, to the far south on the red on this, that's the turnout area and the decontamination area for where they come in, they drop their turnoffs and turnouts and keep everything separate, and then there's decon outside, and there's wash.
Perfect, thank you.
So it's good to build during a downturn and during a recession because prices come down, and we might be on the cusp of that. When we vote for this next, first?
Yeah, you're locking in these prices now with this, on this.
Prices coming down, it doesn't do us any good.
So, Mayor, Counsel, so we have, this is a maximum number for us. We will be, we've asked the contractor, particularly, I want to go back and look at steel, concrete, and masonry. This is the maximum contract amount that we'll lock into for now. We've seen some of those prices dropping, and we're going to ask them to rebid those three areas, and then if we do realize some savings, that will go into contingencies on the side.
So this is a not-to-exceed number?
It's a not-to-exceed, and that's one of the benefits of using this type of process is we, if prices are changing like that, we reap the benefits of it.
Great. Mr. Freeman?
I have to answer.
Okay, great. Thank you, Counsel. Any other, again, this is for introduction.
Well, this will be for action on December 1st.
So being introduced today.
And then I think.
We've got some graphics if you.
Oh, yeah, why don't you show that?
Sorry.
If you would like to see what we're proposing for the building.
Yes.
If you're visual like me, this is the part I love. So this is just looking from the northwest corner to the southeast, just in bird's eye view of the building. This is the front entryway. We like our buildings to be durable, lasting. We like for them to be very professional and in some ways elegant in the way that they look. It's a government building, and as most of you know, government buildings are around for a very long time. We renovate them and reuse them, and we like for them to have a lasting look. This is the fire station bays on the southern end of the site, the police station site on the northern end of the site, and these are just, real quickly, some of the interior views of conference rooms and open work areas. You can kind of see their cubicles and desks and things of that nature. And then just next steps, tonight, we'd like to award the contract for the GMP. We'd like to have a groundbreaking ceremony on December 5th, later in the week after it's awarded. We would like to start construction in the spring then and complete in the fall of 2024.
So, Mayor and Counsel, we will expect, hopefully, we'll prove this on the 1st because I think we have shovels ready for you on the 3rd. We get going quickly if possible, so. Yep, great.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Beth. Counsel, other questions on the agenda for the 1st of December?
Mayor, can I just point out something really quick on 5C? 5C is our kind of annual agreement with RBTA on our bus transit, paratransit and ride choice. The reason I want to point this out is under the current situation with the expiration of Prop 400. It just kind of shows you the value of Prop 400 to the city to run bus and paratransit. The overall cost is $26.8 million. Of that amount, the city general fund picks up 5.4. The city relies upon the regional sales tax to pick up the additional $21.4 million. If Prop 400 is no longer available at the end of 2025, then that's the gap we would have to cover as a local government, which won't happen, but it's just that, that's the benefit of the regional sales tax to the city of Mesa for these specific services.
Hopefully, we're not talking about that all the way through '23, '24, and '25.
Exactly.
All right, Counsel, any other questions or information about the December 1st meeting? All right, if not.
Mayor?
Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Item 5G and the Signal Butte Water Treatment Plan Expansion. If we could just have a quick review so we know how that's going to increase our capacity for water reuse and what that means to our city. Is Brian here?
Chris, or, come on, Chris.
Why do I always call him Brian?
I was in the cheap seats. So Vice Mayor, you had a question about Signal Butte?
Just an overview of the project and how, you know, the capacity and what that means to our city as far, there's a lot of focus on water, as it should be, how much more we're able to treat, and the overall capacity and use of that.
Sure, well, Mayor, Vice Mayor, the current plant is 24 MGD, so that was completed about four years ago. So we're in design right now to expand that to double the capacity to 48 MGD. We're at 60% design, working towards 90%, which will be at the end of February. We have our contractor, our C-Mark contractor, already on board, and we're working with them. They're part of the team, and they'll be preparing a GMP for construction sometime mid, middle of the winter.
So this is, kind of going back to the Mayor's comments about kind of, we're also, are the words, being strategic about the timing of when this project will go out for big, because there's a lot of materials that are, right now, have been very expensive, but we believe that they may be moderating, is that a fair word, in the near future? So we're also kind of waiting for the timing of the construction costs for this project to come down. This was originally estimated to be, how much was, 180?
The original construction cost was about $105 million.
And the last time we came to Counsel and your rates, you showed them how much?
It was over $180 million, about $185 million. So it went up considerably, but the timing of that was probably at the worst time of this calendar year that was really in the teeth of inflation. So that's when prices were probably peaking in the construction industry. And there's other cross-currents, so at the same time, we're, we're in the midst of this drought, we're awaiting every day new information from the Bureau of Reclamation regarding potential cuts. As you know, we're going into Tier 2A cuts on the Colorado River next year for 2023. So we really just want to observe everything, and not only the trending of construction costs, but where we're going to stand with our water portfolio.
And this is just the zoning site review, site plan review for this. We'll still be coming back to Counsel at the GMPs and all those.
Mr. Thompson?
Chris, where are we at with the interconnect pipeline?
Let's ask that, Chris.
Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, an alternative study is just wrapping up by our consultant. So they've looked, they've worked with the city staff to work through a number of different alignments. It's not just one pipe, as you know. There's, there's an eastern leg that's a more direct route between Signal Butte and Brown Road to move water north and south and vice versa. And then there's a western leg that goes, we call it, through the Falcon Zone, so it would allow us to treat water at Valvista, push that south and get it down into that part of the tech corridor where, where you would see some of our, our larger water users. And then there's also some smaller segments, maybe one-mile pipes. So it's a conglomerate of different pipes. They've just finished that. We've submitted our comments to the consultant, and we've also asked them to update the construction costs because they, they didn't quite do that in the last of the middle.
It's a top priority project, Chris.
It is a top priority. There's many, many benefits with that, so we are moving along. We're just in the alignment study right now.
Yeah, it's going to be important as, you know, in drought two, CAP is going to start charging us more per acre foot, so it'll be, the timing would be perfect to get that.
We agree.
Get that moving, so, thank you.
So the Signal Butte exclusively treats water from CAP.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Yep.
So we're at 24, we're going to go to another 24, so presumably, we have at least 48 in authorization from CAP.
Oh, we've, we don't even use the total author, what we legally own from the CAP, but we, we need to have the ability to treat.
Right.
What we, what we have rights to. Am I saying that correctly?
Correct. I'd say you said that correctly, and then also remember, we're in design on the Central Mesa reuse pipeline, so we're working towards 90% on that project with the intent of going to construction next spring, and that will unlock a lot of extra capacity in that exchange agreement we have with Hela River Indian Community.
So these are three, I'm glad the Counsel remembers these, because these are very important projects, both Signal Butte expansion, the interconnect, and then the central reuse pipe. So all of those will be huge in kind of helping us manage our portfolio of water in the future.
But the capacity for treating water at the, at the Signal Butte will still be 48, but will we then be using more of the rights transferred from the Hela River towards that 48 and let more of our rights go downriver?
Correct, in part, Mayor. So we already, we already maximized the 24 MGD Signal Butte, so early in the spring, all the way through into October, we're running at 24 MGD. So with that extra capacity, we could treat more, and we have more, as Mr. Brady said, we have more in our portfolio. So when we do expand to 48, we might not be treating 48 on day one, when the, when the plan is built in 2026, when it's finished, but we'll be probably halfway there and then working our way into maximum capacity.
And hopefully, that'll be when we issue the last permit. No, we're building out the city at the same time, right? So that's all planned together, so.
And when did you say that you thought it would be online, this expansion?
In the middle of. In the middle of 2026.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Counsel, any other questions relative to the December 1st meeting agenda? All right, if not, the next item on our agenda for this meeting, item 2A, is a presentation and to provide direction on proposed amendments to Title VI, Chapter 12, Mesa City Code, entitled "Defensive, Excessive, and Prohibited Noises," also known as our noise ordinance. Gentlemen, this is on the agenda for tonight's meeting upstairs, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor, Vice Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor, Counsel. I have with me Jeff Baylen, who's our police staff legal advisor, who will be presenting with me. We went back and did some work on this ordinance where we were here before you several weeks ago. And the purpose of this recommended change to the ordinance is really to restructure and clean up some of the language in the current ordinance. It's, it can be confusing, not only for our community, businesses, and residents as well, but also it has led to some challenges with actually enforcement and which could lead to prosecution issues. We also wanted to create similarity with other municipalities, and we wanted to be mindful of the urban area and the businesses and industries that operate within Mesa, including aeronautical and industrial industries at all parts of the city. One of the primary changes that were recommendation is really some suggested language with some general prohibitions and factors that we would consider when making a determination if a noise is unreasonable. And it's going to read "a violation to make, assist in making, permit or continue, cause be made or continued, or permit the continuance of any loud, unnecessary, unusual sound or noise that disturbs, injures, or endangers the comfort, repose, health, peace, or safety of a reasonable person." And what's different about this is there are going to be a list of factors that an officer would be able to use when making that determination. And as you can see, I'll read them. It's the volume and intensity of the noise and background noise, proximity of the source to residential structures, zoning and permitted land use from which the sound or noise emanates from, whether it's recurrent, intermittent, or constant, the time of day, especially considering 10:00 PM, between the hours of 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM, and whether it's enhanced by electronic or mechanical means, and whether it can be controlled without unreasonable effort or expense to the creator. Of note, our officers are trained on utilizing what we call the reasonable standard. It's not uncommon for them to have factors to consider when they make a current or a judgment on whether something is unreasonable using the state statute for disorderly conduct. These are very similar factors that they would utilize in that situation.
Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry to interrupt. Could it be one factor, or does it have to be three factors, or what's, how does that look?
Sure. Mayor, Councilmember Spillsberry, that's a good question. There really isn't a set number. It's based on the situation. We recognize that whether it's a neighborhood or a business, each one of those cases is unique. It could just be one factor that sticks out, given the circumstance that makes it unreasonable. And in some cases, it could be multiple factors that helps the officer make that determination that it is unreasonable. Jeff, did you want to add?
Yeah, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember. So under the new code, they will consider the list of factors. Which factor has more weight is a different equation. Some will have more weight than others, just depending on the facts. But they will go through the factors, will consider them, and some, you know, are going to hold more weight.
And Mayor and Counsel also add that these are the factors that you'll see in Gilbert and Tempe, very similar to that. That's where they, we look to be similar to other communities. One of the factors is actually like Chandler. So we looked at neighboring communities to become more similar to them.
So it could just be one factor, though, like the time one or something?
That's correct.
Okay.
So Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, I'm just going to go through some of the changes that are from the last code to the proposed code, and really, it's minimal. If you look at our current code, they regulate and prohibit unreasonable noise coming from vehicles, animals, sound amplification systems in or on vehicles, property, people. The new city code would do exactly the same things. The language was cleaned up, made a little bit more simpler, but all in all, does a lot of the same things, if not all. And so the current code also exempts noise related to emergency work involving fires, accidents, disasters, utilities, government units or agencies, parades, concerts, festivals that are approved by the city, school, athletic, musical, cultural activities or events, activity permitted under the zoning code. And we'll get to that factor in just a moment when I go over the changes. Construction, repair, remodeling, demolition, drilling, woodcutting, crafts and hobbies, excavation work, and landscaping between 6:00 AM and 8:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and between 6:00 AM and 8:00 PM, Saturday and Sunday for residences. And so when we turn to some of the changes, you'll see that next to parades, concerts, or festivals approved by the city, those will, those can be exempted, but we've added, the permit may include some limitations. And so it's basically says, like, the city, when approving the special use permit or license, could attach certain hours to that particular license. They could also modify and say, well, we'll allow these types of sounds, but we may not allow these types. So it gives the city a little bit more authority to place some restrictions. It's not just a carte blanche, well, you've got a special use permit, so you can make as much sound as you want. The other things that are changes is that that activity permitted on the zoning code, that has been implemented as a factor, which Chief Wessing already went over. And so instead of being a carte blanche, hey, as long as you were permitted under the zoning code to make, to be whatever type of property you are, meaning under the last code, you would have made, you would have been able to make as much noise as you'd like. And so really, that was a general exemption that was a little bit too large. And so instead of having it there, we put it as a factor that the officers, as well as a judge, would have to consider in order to find enforcement. It's certainly an important factor, but would not be a big hole that would never, you could never enforce, basically. Another addition was just adding the landscape maintenance of golf courses and private parks to start at 5:00 AM instead of 6:00 AM. Another thing that the current code does is it allows for temporary exemptions to be granted by the city manager after considering seven factors. The new suggested code still does that, but it just clarifies how to submit an exemption request and where it's going to be filed if it's granted. One other thing, it was that it would allow the city to require that the requester notify nearby properties of the temporary exemption. Also, responsible parties, owner or property manager, when the person is responsible for an activity that violates the code cannot be found, the new code, the suggested code would still do that. The enforcement, all the same folks that were able to enforce before would be able to enforce in the future. The last thing that the code changes is the fines. It changes the fines for offenses. First offenses, these are all civil violations until you get to a habitual offender, but it'd be, the current code says it's a $250 fine. The suggested code would be no less than $250 and up to $1,500, giving a judge a little bit more leeway, depending on the facts and perhaps history of the violator. Second offense for violation of the city code within 24 months would be no less than $500, up to $2,500. The current code currently has 500. A third offense currently is a $2,500 fine. The suggested code would be no less than 750 and up to 2,500. The other thing that is new is that it adds a habitual offender provision that if you offend, basically on your fourth time after being found responsible for three civil violations, on that fourth time, if it's committed within the 12 months of the other violations, it'd be a Class 1 misdemeanor, fine no less than $500 and up to $2,500.
Any questions?
Thank you. Mr. Luna?
Let's say if somebody violates a garage van, for example. You know, it's past 8 o'clock and they're playing, and you looked at one of those factors. Do you go first initially to provide education and then tell them you're violating the noise ordinance?
That's a good question, Mayor. Councilmember Luna, our strategy has been to try to get compliance and education first and foremost. Certainly, we understand that it is a very difficult issue, particularly in some residential areas. But it has been and will remain our goal to educate and get compliance on our first visit. However, if we continue to visit that same property with the same complaint, then they've already been educated, and that won't be the case any further.
And for example, what about excessive dog barking? You look at one of those factors, and it's during the day, and you're at home, and this dog is constantly barking.
I wish I had an easier answer for you on that one. That's something that we deal with daily throughout the city. We do work with our animal control to try to get at least contact with the actual owners of the pets. But oftentimes, it does result in a citation. But it's a challenge that we're going to continue to have as we have pets around the city.
Okay. And Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, we actually have a specific provision for animals, separate and apart from those factors that you would have seen. It's titled Animal 612-4, and so it's a violation for someone to own, harbor, possess, care for, permit, or keep any animal that causes or makes frequent or long and continued sound that unreasonably disturbs, injures, or endangers the comfort, repose, health, peace, or safety of a reasonable person.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Ms. Spillsberry?
Hi. Thank you for everything you've done trying to work through this, and I appreciate all of the meetings that we've had and helping, you know, researching other cities and trying to find a good situation for our city and what we feel is the best thing to do. I had a question. When we take off the exemption for the commercial businesses, if you said just because it previously worked in the zoning, now it doesn't. It's not like these businesses can be grandfathered in or anything, then? Like if they, so they were running their business a certain way, and, which was allowed, and now all of a sudden, they can't. So what are, what are we doing for that?
Councilmember, I want to make sure I understand your question correctly. Are you saying, are you asking, you know, basically? What, what would?
Do you want me to rephrase?
I'm sorry, I'm trying to.
If a, if a business, like a wedding venue, was near a neighborhood, and it was exempted, and so it could have its volume of music, you know, at a certain level under its zoning or something. So now it would not be allowed to have that under this?
Oh, I think I understand. Yes, Councilmember. So under the current code, there is a general exemption that as long as you were zoned for, to be a wedding venue or any other business, you could essentially make as much noise as you wanted to. And so the change does, says, look, we're taking away that carte blanche. You can make as much noise you want at any hour of the day, under any circumstance. And say, no, there's limitations. It's, it's that we're going to go there, we're going to look at the facts of the case and make a determination based on the totality of circumstances. And it may be that it's unreasonable, it may be that it's not unreasonable. But at least removing that from the general exemption allows for the possibility of that analysis and potential violation to even be found. That's the biggest difference between the past one and what we're currently suggesting.
Okay. And I know that in our meetings, we've gone around and around about an objective noise ordinance versus a subjective one. And so you started off your presentation by saying the officers are trained, what did you call it, under reasonable?
Using a reasonable officer standard.
Okay. And so for those of us that don't really know what that is, can you help us understand what, since we don't have a decibel level or a distance level in ours, which would be an objective noise ordinance, how will we know what an officer finds reasonable or unreasonable? Depending on the mood that they're in, or how the neighbors are treating them, or, you know what I mean? There's a lot of different factors there.
Sure. Mayor, Councilmember Spillsberry, that's a good question, and it's very broad. But in the relation to the noise ordinance, I think the best way I can describe it is, obviously, when an officer or a code-compliance officer does respond to a complaint, they're going to look at the veracity of the complaint. Do I have a complainant who's willing to work with us as far as to corroborate? Do we have evidence that can corroborate that? We're going to look at all the factors, and they have to make a determination whether that's reasonable or not. And again, as you know, you could have 10 different people and potentially have very different standards just with your own personal experience. So it's challenging on the first visit. So this is typically where we get into it with a long-term community issue, where then we work with very specific officers that deal with that case. And you know, in our case, it's the community action officers, that we then kind of bring in other resources. We'll consult with our staff attorney to hopefully come to a better conclusion. But I can't give a very specific answer because every case is going to be unique, and we rely on them to use basically common sense in those factors. Certainly, if it doesn't resolve the issue, then we'll go back and revisit it and see if we can provide some further guidance for that particular situation.
Okay, because a lot of, just like fireworks, a lot of times with noise, once they, once the officers can get there, an hour and a half later, the noise is gone, or they've turned it off, or the party's finished or something, right? So at that point, what do you do?
The biggest challenge in that area is quite often, when officers are dispatched, it's several hours after the initial contact came in because of the prioritization of emergency calls that they're dealing with. And more often than not, when they do arrive, there isn't the noise that may have been there two hours ago. And I would say about 75 to 80% of the time, we don't even have a reporting party that wants to talk to the officers, what we call a, they want no RP contact. So in those scenarios, it's next to impossible for there to be any enforcement. And sometimes they may make contact at the residence where the noise was allegedly coming from, just to gather some information, and they'll document that. So as it continues to happen, we have a record of, we've now had 10 complaints at this address, which would trigger a community action officer to kind of investigate. Does that answer that?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, we've talked a lot. I just, you know, want it more out in the open of what we've been discussing in our meetings. So I'll let some other councilmembers go if they want to.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, I think to Councilmember Spillsberry's point, I'm not really comfortable changing the rules midstream, right? So we've allowed a venue to zone and be in a particular location, doing a particular thing. And her example is a wedding venue. And all of a sudden, now we're changing the rules, saying, wait a minute, at 9 o'clock at night or 8 o'clock at night, if a neighbor complains, PD is all of a sudden going to show up to this wedding party, and the bride and groom are like, wait a minute, you know, what's going on here with all of a sudden, we have police and everyone else coming in telling us to turn down the music or to eliminate our, you know, our wedding party or whatever it is, you know? So it's, I'm not really comfortable with that, that we're suddenly changing the rules on these venues that we've allowed to be there and be active in our community. I think there has to be some way to grandfather those types of venues into that ordinance to allow them to continue to operate as they did prior to, under the old ordinance. And I don't know, I mean, that's my personal feeling. I just don't like where this, you know, how we're all of a sudden changing midstream when a business has been allowed to operate the way they've been operating for years, and all of a sudden, now we're changing and saying, you can't operate like that anymore.
So, Mayor and Counsel, if I could jump in for a second? I apologize, I stepped out for a second. I think we're going to have to pull a different item off the agenda. I think 4A is going to get pulled here for a second, so I apologize, but I stepped out for that. Is, is, let me say, I don't, I don't think the grandfathering is necessary. We realize this is the police ordinance, it's not the zoning ordinance, and so they never had sort of a vested right to some sort of broad exception, which is one possible reading of that ordinance. Think of all the, all the businesses that have zoning, but that didn't have a special use permit. They wouldn't have been able to sort of argue that sort of use, that part of the sort of ambiguous language of the noise ordinance for their benefit. So ironically, so all the, all the, all the cases of the rezonings wouldn't have had it, but someone that happened to get one special use permit might get some sort of anomalous benefit through a reading of the current code. Also say that the businesses that haven't been operating that way. In other words, they haven't been asking, they haven't been acting as if they're completely exempt because they could see how the current code has this ambiguity that we're eliminating. And in fact, I don't, I don't think it really changes ultimately the nature of the businesses. Because what we're doing is, is we're taking that exemption and turning it into a condition of which the officers can look at, and that's similar to all, in fact, that's, that's, that's the steal from Chandler's. We saw that in Chandler's code, and we liked it, and so we took Chandler's code. Some other cities actually don't have that part. So we're, we're actually, we have a very strong provision now as far as taking that into consideration, both the zoning and permitted uses, and so as a factor. And so it's not as if, the intent of this, and if I can go back, the intent of this is not for one, is not to sort of alter the nature of our noise ordinance fundamentally. It's really was intended to clean up some of the ambiguities that existed. The start of that was because of short-term rentals property, and we brought a short-term rental ordinance to council, and we realized that occasionally those businesses, our operations, result in noise issues, and so we wanted to clean it up. And then through that, we became aware of some other issues, and we're cleaning it up. But let me manage expectations of neighbors and neighborhoods. The changes of this noise ordinance are not geared towards a particular business. That's not the intent. The intent was really to clean up the language and to become very similar to other cities, which I'll also say many cities have. which also say many cities have, all, all these other cities that I've mentioned have a reasonable person standard within them. And we've added factors, like the cities that have more detailed noise ordinances have, have. And so, we're not unique in that, in that aspect. And so the intent, in fact, in the recitals, we repeatedly say this is not intended to affect sort of the ongoing businesses, because we realize that this, there's many urban areas within the city. And so we, we're taking that in consideration.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So just to reiterate, this is on the council agenda for upstairs for introduction, and then December the 1st is when we'll vote on this. So if there, if we get more community feedback or have additional questions, we can, this is not our last bite at the apple here. All right? Okay. Any other questions on this? Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda, item three, is to acknowledge receipt of various meeting minutes. Is there a motion? I think you missed, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead, make the motion. We're, we're going to need a poll off of tonight's agenda, 4A.
Okay.
So workers' comp insurance.
So workers' comp insurance, and so Kevin, you can just say that's polled. We're going, it'll come back December 1st, they just discovered an anomaly with it, and we'll, we'll go your back.
Oh, so it's not off consent, it's just off the agenda altogether?
Off, off the.
We need to re, put it on, repost it on a future agenda.
Got it. Okay. Got it. Thank you. So is there a motion to approve minutes? Thank you, Mr. Luna and Mr. Thompson. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That passes unanimously. Item four is current events and conferences attended. Councilmembers, if you have anything you'd like to share? Mr. Luna.
Most, all of us, right? Attended that National League of Cities, except you, Mayor. We missed it, so. But anyway, it was a great conference, but it was freezing. But anyway, we had a great conference. I participated in advisory council meeting, I had a chance to visit the chief stadium, which was pretty cool. I also moderated a panel on digital equity for ITC, Information Technology Committee, and that was a lot of fun. I, of course, attended Hilo meetings, and we had a great time doing that. On Saturday evening, I attended the Ambassador's Ball with Esteban Montecumeta, and he's the ambassador from Mexico here, from the United States. And also today, I had a luncheon with the ambassador from Mexico. But also, Mayor, if it's okay, I wanted to introduce some leadership students from Benedictine University, if you wouldn't mind standing up. And Joe Wilson is their, their sponsor. Joe, you must stand. From Benedictine University, they're following, they're following me just to get an idea of what city council is like, so.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, also, are you going to talk about your award?
Why don't you brag for her?
I want to brag. So we need to congratulate Vice Mayor Duff. She got an arts award from the National League of Cities, and it's a big deal. It's a first one, inaugural one, the inaugural award for the National League of Cities. She got to go onstage and put her on big screen, and so we're very, very proud of, of Vice Mayor Duff for that wonderful award and that recognition. She's a hard worker and certainly an advocate of the arts here in the city of Mesa, so thank you, congratulations. And I, I know many of us were there to watch her receive and accept her award. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, did you say something?
I said, bravo, bravo.
Thank you. We agree with you. All right. Thank you. Ms. Spillsbury.
Yeah, last Tuesday, we had Turkey Tuesday, where everyone came and donated turkeys. I didn't even see what the final number was.
We'll give it to you this week.
Yeah. I mean, just so many turkeys. And the, our engineering department is in charge of that, and it was a fun activity. And then this morning, they did the Thanksgiving food distribution over at the Mesa Convention Center with United Food Bank. And we, a lot of us were there this morning, and, man, those, I don't know if we've ever had a backup like that on center before, so obviously, there's a need in the community. Well, no, they were saying they think these numbers were higher than during COVID, so.
It was pretty tough.
I know. But it was, it was really cool to be there this morning and to see all of that happening. And they're doing it again the week of Christmas, so it's, it's a great thing out there. And then last Tuesday, before we left for Kansas City and NLC, I got to go and speak at the very first Metta's Hard Hat in Hand graduation, their first class that they had go through. They basically teach kids, it's like four weeks of in-class, and then on the, on the job training for the metadata centers. And so that was just incredible to see what we talked about at the Education Workforce Roundtable in action, to do some of these programs that help upskill kids and get them better jobs. So I enjoyed being a part of that as well.
Thank you. Who'd like to go next? Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. You and I participated in the Mesa City Cemetery, so the NFL Host Committee, they committed to fundraising $4,000 for cypress trees. As you know, our monsoons have taken out quite a few cypress, probably several hundred trees. And I want to thank Andrea Moore and her staff, and also the cemetery staff, for auguring the holes ahead of time, because it helps streamline the planting. I guarantee you, you don't want to dig in that ground. But it was very nice. So we had, Host Committee consisted of Verizon, APS, Footprint Foundation, and there, there were other matching grants for this green project. So it's part of our climate action plan and a part of greening of our cemetery. And, and I thought, you know, our planters, you know, decades ago, we're probably talking 70, 80, 90 years ago, they were thinking ahead by planting olive and cypress trees for their longevity and their peace, and what tranquil that you can get when you go to the cemetery. So as you go to the cemetery, you'll see some brand-new trees, and if you'd like to donate, they're still accepting donations for trees. So thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Vice Mayor.
Well, I will, I would like to mention a little bit about the award. I was deeply honored to accept an award from the American for the Arts in conjunction with the National League of Cities. And it was the inaugural Public Leadership in the Arts Award for City Councils. So as the first city council member awarded this, they had never expanded the award to the level of local governments. You know, they'd always done it at higher levels of government. And so I was very pleased to see that this award is now at a city council level, because where, where we're making true impacts, you know, with our facilities and with our community, and expanding the arts and the impacts it has on our community. And I just wanted to say that, you know, I have such a deep-seated passion for the arts, because it plays a vital role in our lives and our communities, where it's bringing people together, and weaves a thread across all generations and nationalities and languages, diversities, and it just brings us together. And the award would not be possible at all without our wonderful Mesa Arts and Culture Departments and facilities, the community supporters and the artists, and our city recognizing the importance of the arts. Our councils have always recognized that and supported it, and I appreciate that, that I could continue that work. And with our Arts and Innovation District in downtown Mesa blossoming, I'm thrilled to be able to continue the work on expanding the arts and its impact on our community. Also, at the National League of Cities, I did participate. I'm on a policy committee for energy, environment, and natural resources. I'm also on the Women in Municipal Government Board, and attended a large cities council meeting, as well as a number of different workshops. I served as a judge for youth civic engagement. That was really lots of fun, and thrilled to see hundreds of high school students learning more about civic engagement, had to do a presentation about what they were passionate about, and hopefully, we'll see them in councils across the nation. I was also on a focus group of corporate landlords and their impact on the housing market. It's interesting how that is impacting our market as REITs and a number of very corporate ownerships of the housing market is impacting our neighborhoods and such. Going back to Veterans Day, we had a Veterans Day parade that was phenomenal in downtown Mesa, and that's on the Sunday. We also recognize the Royal Air Force British Cadets that lost their lives in training at Falcon Field during World War II. That's an annual event, and I deeply value that. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? You guys checked off everything I had down, with the exception of while you were in Kansas City, I covered for you at the Mesa Police Department yearly awards banquet that was held on Thursday night at Dobson Ranch. I know you all, I know you all would have been there had you been in town. But it was a great event and highlighted some wonderful civilian and sworn officers and, and members of the community that were very worthy of, of being commended. And then also, the, a week ago Sunday, I had the honor of speaking at the memorial service for Mayor Kino Hawker, and, which I thought was, I was so glad we could do that at the Mesa Arts Center and recognize, had, well, we're standing on Mr. Hawker's shoulders. He did a lot of the things that, that we celebrate right now were initiated under Mr. Hawker's administration, and I'm glad we could acknowledge that. If there's nothing else, Mr. Brady, what is our, I know I kind of teased it earlier on, but what is our future schedule of meetings look like?
Thank you, Mayor. Our next meeting for the council will be Thursday, December 1st, and then the final meeting of this year will be December 8th. There will be study sessions for each, before each of those council meetings, and we have a couple presentations, so look for that earlier start date for each one of those. And then this Thursday, I think we talked about turning on the lights downtown at Mary Main Street. That goes from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. There's a 5:45 program. We invite, Friday, sorry. Did I say Thursday? It says Thursday. It shouldn't be Thursday, right? This Friday, from 5:00 to 10:00. So we invite everybody to come on down, and the ice rink has ice right now, so we're excited to open it up on Friday also.
Thank you. That'll be a fun night. I think this is going to be the best Mary Main Street ever, because everything is the temple lights and the ice rink. The Man Who Killed Santa Claus will also play Friday night after, at 7:00 o'clock, so if